Good evening, welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for April 15th, 2020. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Jeb chapter 38, section 20 relating to the 2020 noble coronavirus outbreak emergency. On the April 15th, 2020, 7 o'clock PM, public hearing of the North Fork zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software HTTPS double slash zoom.us for remote access. This software will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or questions to the chair via the raise your hand function. The meeting will be recorded for future broadcast by Norfolk Community Television. Tonight, we have a public hearing for Net Grid Inc. We have deliberations for 77 Boardman Street, and we have some minutes to review. So we'll begin with the first public hearing for North Fork Grid here at 7:10 PM. We're a special permit pursuant of MGL chapter 48, section 9 as amended. It's sections M and D to B7 of the North Fork zoning bylaws to allow a large scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic system. The property is located at 45 Meeting House Road, assessors map 14, block 41, lot 9 in the B1 zoning district. Okay, and with us, we have Nathan Collins, who I imagine is going to be presenting for us this evening.
So this project was actually designed to be under 250 kilowatts DC as the planning of the zoning bylaw in the town of Norfolk does not consider that to be a large ground mount solar, but for a few other reasons in the zoning bylaws, it still needs to come to the BZA. But we've been working on this project since the end of last month. So we were at point over the last six months on over this project. It is, like I said, just under 250 kilowatt DC ground mount solar facility. The land that this is built on is owned by the adjacent condo association. They approached us to develop this project so they can earn some supplemental income and get some discounts on bills for their residents. The project has been through quite a few iterations, as Nathan can go through, to get this to the point where everyone was okay with it. On the east side is where we do have a butters. You can see that there are four houses you can see on the map, and then the triangle piece to the south, we have another abutter. We can't actually see his house, but he has been pretty active in the planning board here in Baltimore today. But the current iterations were definitely influenced by his potential ability to see the site. It's set back over 200 feet from any residential home, but as you'll see, we still added some landscape features, Leland Cypress on both residential sides. So the system, or sorry, on the east side, the residential abutters not in the condo association. So we definitely believe the actual site itself is not going to be able to be seen by any abutter. It's set back hundreds of feet from any adjacent property. And we've also done some adjustments to the road that Nathan will go through to both make it easier in the future to reach some of the town owned properties to the north as well as appease some of the concerns of the condo association. So it feels really low impact site. It's small, the fenced areas, I believe, just shy of an acre. It's not in the DEP purview, although we did go to CommCon because it's adjacent to some stormwater features of the condo association. It's adjacent to their pond. But, you know, it's a small project, it's a very low impact project, and we've again been through the planning board for six months to try to make this a project that is palpable for both the abutters, the town, and condo association. So I'm going to hand it over to Nathan and get you the details. But we really thank you for your time. Thanks for getting on Zoom, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Daniel. For the record, my name-
Thanks.
For the record, my name is Nathan Collins, principal with CLC Design. And as Daniel has noted, we've been working, I think our first submission on this particular project was in September, and that was to the planning board. The project, as you know, the property location is located in the Business Core District. The total parcel is about 15.8 acres that is owned by the condo association. And this development is, it's actually a little over an acre of area that will have to be cleared to build this proposed solar array. The solar array itself is 684 units, and it is accessed by a 16 foot wide gravel driveway. Originally, the driveway came directly off of the access road or the back access road for the condos, but working with them and also working with the town, we rerouted it so the access is off of the driveway to the condo association's storm, I'm sorry, sewer pump house building. And as Daniel noted, we moved the roadway north on the site. So in the future, the town would be able to gain access to their water tower area because right now they're, I believe they're paying a fairly substantial amount of money to have access on a northerly access point off of the condominium's access points. So the site itself, it, the existing terrain, it flows kind of north to south on the site. And as part of that, to mitigate offsite flows for stormwater, working with the town's review engineers, beta group, we're proposing a detention pond on the south portion of the area to be cleared. I call it a detention pond, but it's only, it has a maximum depth of about two feet and in a hundred year storm event, which it's sized to store, the total water level will only be about a little over one and a half feet with an overflow that will connect it back to the route that the stormwater flows now, and that's on the southeastern point of the project. As Daniel had noted, we've maintained a 50 foot vegetated buffer. I should say a minimum 50 foot vegetated buffer, but in many areas, it exceeds that, 75 to 100 approximately. We did add additional plantings, evergreen plantings to appease in potential impacts for the abutters. And based on the planning board condition, there's potential that there could be some additional, I believe in Rich could come here, but the order reads that after installation, we'll walk the site and kind of reevaluate that vegetation, that vegetated buffer to see if we need to add anymore. There is a six foot black vinyl coated chain link fence around the entire perimeter as well as a gate. And the fence itself will be elevated approximately six inches off the ground to assist with critters. So to date, we've, we've received approval through the planning board. We've received approval through the conservation commission, DEP, wetlands, they did there, they did not think it fell under their jurisdiction, so they did not provide any conditions. We also filed with natural heritage, and they approved the project as a non-take. So they have proved the project as designed. With that, excuse me, with that, I'll turn it over to the board. Certainly, if you have any technical questions, I can, I can do my best to address them.
Thank you, Nathan. Any questions from the board? For Nathan? Devin?
Just all I have to say is, you know, I'd like how they've added screening. This looks like a good plan to me. I don't have any comments other than that.
Okay, Joe?
I just wanted to know how it fits into the bylaws with the overlay. Is there a particular solar overlay district associated with this?
This particular zone, the Business Core, it's not, it's not within the solar overlay district. It is, it allowed to be used through the special permit process.
Okay. Otherwise, similar to Devin's comments, I do like the fact that you've addressed some of the abutter concerns with screenings and setbacks. Thank you.
Tim?
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, great. Just a question, I couldn't hear all of it on the access to the water tower. Could that be explained real briefly again? I think there was a comment that there's a new access point now, more beneficial for the town.
Sure, so, yeah, I think if, if Rich-
Sure.
I don't know, Rich, if you want to try to explain that with a pointer?
Yeah, sure. So here, the water tower, do you see the red dot?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the water tower there. What we want to be able to do is just put in a drive to come up this way to the water tower property. I'm gonna, I'll show you, let's see if we have the locus. So if you see on top of the locus map up here where the red dot is-
Yeah, yeah, I see that, yeah.
So right now, you have to go through Meeting House, condominium complex, and then the town crosses over a piece of property that Mr. Barelli owns, and we're actually paying for access to get to the water tower. By this new project, we're gonna go, the idea is the water department's gonna go, hold on a second. And we've talked to the trustees for the condo association to just construct-
Yeah.
-an access way here, and then abandoned paying to go over a small piece of property for access to the water tower. So we just have to construct it, but at least we have-
Okay.
-do it now.
And then we, and then we can forego the cost of the access of the Barelli property?
Correct.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yep.
Josephine?
I think that considering the characteristics of this property and the risks involved with keeping the way it is, I believe that this is probably the best use we can get out of this, and I appreciate every effort they've had to work in harmony with their neighbors. And I believe with the screening and everything that it's, looks good to me.
Don? Don?
Did we lose Don?
Don, you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right. I echo what I just heard from other people relative to the work that's been done to mitigate some of the original abutters questions. My question is on there is that the applicant mentioned triangular piece of property, and I believe it was the southeast corner, but I might have my, mixed up, where there was still concerns by the abutter that they would be looking at the arrays and that, that the applicant has agreed that through the planning board, I believe, that they would do a post, I'll call it construction walkthrough, and if there were any areas that were of concern, that they would address them that, at that point. Is that correct?
Yeah.
That is correct. That's part of the, one of the conditions in the planning board approval was a post-construction sidewalk.
And, and my question to the applicant, if this was to result in, let's say, a $500 or $1,000 expenditure to satisfy whatever the abutters issues were, is that something that would be a hardship to the applicant?
Am I, is this hearing?
He's kind of muted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't hear him at all.
Can't hear you.
My, it doesn't say I'm muted. Am I muted from your end, Richard? Rick?
Rich, he's not coming through.
Yeah, I'm checking to see what, what the heck.
Who's not coming through? Don?
No, Daniel, why isn't it Daniel? It doesn't say he's muted.
So we can hear him, but he's, does he sound blurry, for lack of a better term? Like I can hear you, but you're muted. You're, it sounds like you're the bottom of the barrel.
Yeah, exactly.
Sounds like he's under the barrel.
Either that or speak closer to your iPad.
Yeah, okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, now, yes.
I brought up the Christopher Banker property just because you couldn't actually see his house on the map, and just wanted to make sure there's a house to the south. He has come to most of our meetings and been very nice and respectful and vocal about what he wants to see. So, yeah, he, we've agreed that we've screened based on some drawings that Nathan produced showing what people would be able to see from the ground. Chris is going to be able to see this, but we agreed in condition to walk the site, and if there is a line of sight to our project, we'll install Cypress. Now, we've already agreed to install the Leland Cypress, quite a bit of the site, so it's like planted in addition to what we've already agreed to is about $100 install the tree. It's, you know, if it's $1,000, $2,000, you know, it's not gonna kill us. We just really think that the existing vegetation is, is pretty, and we don't need to add additional non-native plants if we don't have to.
Thank you, Daniel. That's all, that's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, Rich, is there, is there a surety on this project?
There is, there will be through the, through the planning board.
Okay.
Through the site.
Yeah.
All right. What does, what does that mean? Is there a surety?
So the surety is for the removal of the, of the arrays, because in fact, they need to be decommissioned.
Okay. And, and my understanding is there's going to be no lighting on this property. How are you going to handle, is there any emergency situations at night, just with regard to the abutters, if there's going to be no lighting on the project?
Can you hear me? This is Daniel. So there's no potential emergency besides fire situation that could happen on any empty lot, and there's no increased risk of fire due to this kind of solar facility. So-
Okay.
The fire department doesn't believe there needs to be any lighting, and if it's an emergency, as in there's no power being produced, I mean, there's, there's never power being produced at night, so there's just no potential for emergency.
Okay.
Chris, if I can add to that-
And no accessory buildings? Sure.
Just, I've been part of substantially larger solar projects than this, and I've never seen security lighting at night.
Okay. And Rich, I think, I heard him say they're gonna use, is it, and it was muted, and maybe Daniel can say, blue coated or black coated chain link fencing?
That's correct. Black vinyl coated.
Rich, is that, does that meet our bylaws, something, for some reason, I was thinking we had to do, it had to be wood, or am I missing something with that? Or is it depending in what district? Do we have to do wood fencing as opposed to? You're muted, Rich. I'm just trying to remember, I know in the C district, don't we require wood fencing? And I didn't know if that was the same in the blue without look, in the B without looking it up.
I'll look real quick. The fence is more of a security than a screening fence. The vegetation is, is the offering that- We don't, I don't see anything relative to wood fence here. I don't see a wood-
All right, so you don't think there's any, you don't think, I just couldn't remember in our B district if we ever required that. Because I know in the C, I think it did, is that, am I not mistaken?
So in the C, the, so the screening, you can use vegetation if you talk about the screening within the B zone, it does allow for-
Right.
-for vegetation, a vegetative screen under- Hold on a second. Yeah.
So is this, is this vegetation that's going to be planted, Nathan or Dan, Dan, gonna be continuous or is it sporadic?
The landscaping is laid out in accordance with the town's green belt definition based on spacing. It's two rows, and I, the numbers off the top of my head, I think it's 10 feet on center, and then each row is six feet.
Okay.
And in reference to the wood fencing, I believe- In reference to the wood fencing, I believe that's only associated with fuel.
No, because I think, isn't the, wasn't the cell tower up there in the B district on that property having to have a wood fence, Rich? That was one of the conditions, that's why, that's why when I heard it, it's-
No, no.
That requires wood fencing for-
No, it is, that's true. Under the cell tower for the, the equipment area need to be screened with a solid fence for visual barrier.
Right.
But not in this application, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, great. All right, if there's no other questions from the board, we can open it up to any of the abutters who have concerns. Do we have any butters? If they could just state their name for Amy?
Or it's Barbara Carter. Can you hear me?
Yes, Barbara.
Yes.
Okay. Amy's still talking. Is Amy talking? Amy, you're on mute. I'm not sure if you're talking to me.
I think you can go ahead.
Sorry about that. I had a question to the chairman or a comment. There's a gentleman named Ron in the waiting room, did not provide a last name, I don't know. Does anyone, is anyone familiar with a Ron who might be affiliated with this project?
I'm not aware of it.
No.
I mean, you can let him in, and if we need to, we could remove him. I mean, if it-
Well, if we get Zoom bombed, everybody should just log out of the meeting and try coming back in in a few minutes, okay?
Okay.
Just if he was in this project, I want him to hear what you have to say, Barbara.
Okay. Okay.
I guess Amy, before you bring him in.
Oh, he's in.
Done?
Yep.
I would say if he wasn't in by 10 after 7, I wouldn't let him in.
He actually had been waiting for a while.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you want to find out who he is, Amy, real quick?
Ron, can you identify yourself? Last name, please?
Ron, you're on mute.
On, oh, yeah. Unmuted by host.
Yep, Ron?
Yes? Can you hear me?
Yeah, your last name, please just-
Ober, O-B-E-R.
Oh, it's Ron Ober, okay.
Okay.
Ron, invited to every meeting.
Okay, Ron, sorry for the wait there. If you could put your first and last name, it would make it easier so that we know to admit you in the future, okay?
Sure can, yeah.
Great. Okay, so they're doing the 41 Meeting House, and Barbara Carter was just about to ask a question.
Thank you, Amy.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Thanks so much. So I really have more of a statement to make, less, less about questions. I just want to let this board know my feelings about the projects. We made Norfolk our home nearly 18 years ago. A big part of the attraction was the rural character of this town. We knew the development was planned for the town hill, but it never crossed our mind that the area that was wedged between our home and the water tower would be developed for any reason. It's hilly, it's rocky, with the tower looming over it. It just didn't seem like it was something that was going to happen. We never even thought of it. I've attended the multiple planning board meetings in which this project was discussed. The board was receptive to our concerns and let me and my neighbors know also that the place to voice our concern is here at the zoning board of appeals. I sent a letter to the town boards back in February detailing a variety of concerns, but today I'll cover just three, and I think my husband probably wants to discuss one or two as well. The visual impact, which I think most people probably associate the visual impact with me, the forest area between my homes, behind my home, serves as a beautiful extension of my own backyard. The project will remove more than an acre of trees, and I requested that something be done to minimize the impact. Evergreens have been added to appease me, that's, that's fantastic, I appreciate that. But it's not just the fact that I was afraid that I might see those solar panels or that I might see a fence, it was also the fact that a whole acre of trees that I'm looking out actually right now, up out my kitchen window, is going to be gone. So it's impossible. I don't think I'm going to see a swath of solar panels up that hill. I know I won't see a swath. I may see one or two, and that may bother me, but then again, I may not see them. What really bothers me is it's impossible that my view is going to remain unchanged. It's just impossible, and that makes me sad, and it makes me not happy at all about this project. Drainage, so the detention pond for the proposed site will sit directly up the hill from my property, approximately 150 feet away from my home. My husband will talk a little bit more about this, but I know that this project must meet state requirements for stormwater management. The town engineers and the various boards will ensure that it does meet those requirements, but what if something does go wrong? I mean, this is something new for our town, and you all are familiar, I think, with the area. It's this crazy little hilly area that just comes right down onto Union Street. What if something goes wrong? Who will pay for the damage to my home? And then finally, property resale value. The project has the potential to negatively impact the resale value of the homes on Union Street, or at least the homes that are right beneath it. Knowing what I know today, I would not have bought my home 18 years ago, and I believe the potential buyers would not want a solar array in their backyard. There's no data out there that tells us how these solar arrays impact home values, but I know what I would want to buy, and it's not a house with a solar array in the backyard. I posed this project and believe that it's an inappropriate use of this land. Removing trees and changing wildlife habitat, altering the backyard view of Union Street residents, creating drainage issues possibly for those neighbors, and potentially driving down home values is detrimental to our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Barbara, is your husband going to speak?
I think he is, Johnny?
I, yes, I'd like to say a couple of things. Mainly, yes, the visual impact, I don't believe that it will be negligible. I'd like to know who's going to maintain the vegetation after it's been planted, if, you know, if that's of consideration. But my big concern is the stormwater, I mean, it's been designed to adequately handle stormwater, but you're essentially paving what is currently a natural water collector on a hill, a massive bunch of trees. So how can you really design for this? So how can you really design for this? You have tests, but what recourse do the butters have? If, when the stormwater, if and when it fails to adhere to the design requirements, what do we do? So my, my proposal is, how about NextGrid and all of the following companies who buy this solar panel array? As NextGrid apparently likes to do, if they're required to pay flood insurance for the butters. Maybe it could be time specified expiration, if there's no incident in the next 10 years, they don't have to pay anymore. But they assure us, I don't believe the adequate tests can be done for this particular section to show that after so much rain, the draining still works. Common sense and living here for almost 20 years tells me it won't. How do you fill up land with water down to the ledge that we all know is there, but then then keep filling, I don't know, I don't trust the tests, so that's why I think NextGrid or perhaps even the condo association itself can take a small fraction of their profits and give us the butters some insurance beyond a couple of test results that don't mean anything when your basement gets flooded. Just yesterday, I was up the hill looking and there was a substantial pond right there where a part of the solar array is going to be. There was a big storm on Monday, as we all know, and, you know, it's going to be sloped to go right down the hill. And finally, with the climate change, 100-year storms come a lot more often than 100 years. Now, we all seen Venice flooding recently. Alright, sorry to go on about that, but I would like to say a couple more things. In one meeting, the trustees of the condo association stated that they do not need the explicit permission from all or a quorum of individual condo owners to proceed with this panel array. That means they have no say as members of the condo association about voting this. They've given their voting by proxy. At least one gentleman has pointed out that he is opposed, condo owner. And it essentially means that they are unrepresented, so I'm not sure, I'd like to know that these butters were treated as butters, there are butters if they have no real say. So were they notified of all the meetings beyond what the condo should have given them but may or may not have? Did NextGrid contact them? Okay, and finally, I know business must go on. But we are in a pandemic and some butters and/or concerned people may not even be aware that this meeting is taking place. You know, there's different, different technologically, you know, there's technological challenges, obviously, we've seen it already tonight. We appeal to the Board of Appeals to postpone this decision until we can all return to normal and present our opinions in the normal and expected fashion. This form is prejudicial and inadequate for dealing with this decision. And given that the electricity produced by the solar panel is solely for the purpose of making money for the condo association, there's no impending crisis or urgency to impose this level of compromise on Norfolk's residents. Thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you, John. Don, do you have a question?
I was just going to make a comment that I don't believe, John, that the ZBA has the ability to to subject any type of approval to a third party. You made the comment about how Ed resource or somebody else, the condo association, could be required to carry flood insurance for butters. And I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich or Chris, that the ZBA has the authority to obligate or contractually oblige a third party outside of the, the party of the applicant and the, and the town which the ZBA represents. Am I correct?
I would say you're correct, Don, I don't know if, Don, do you want to add anything to that, Rich?
You're muted, Rich, you're muted.
I would agree, I think, I mean, I understand Mr. Carter's, what he's asking, but essentially it's not really, you know, flood insurance is provided when you're actually within a flood zone and, and there's a so in this particular case, I think any liability with flood, if there was stormwater, flooding from stormwater would be under your liability of the, of the property owner, you know, the, actually the condo association as well, because there, it's, you know, their property would be causing damage onto the Carter's property. And I'm not, not an attorney, but it's, Devin has his hand up, so maybe he could add something perhaps?
Couple of things I want to add, number one, just looking at their plans, I don't see any proposed pavement, all I see is gravel. I believe under DEP guidelines for solar panels arrays, panels are not considered impervious area.
It's brass, it's, I think my husband was being, he said it would be like pavement, it's
I, I use the word essentially paving, you're taking out trees and, you know, basically water catching environment.
Yes, so, so they, according to their plans, have designed that pond also to the 100-year storm event. One question I would have is why their overflow spillway is directed towards a butter properties? I see there's a wetland to the left side, west of the detention pond, just don't really know why it wasn't directed that way. Seems a little bit confusing to me is why that decision was made.
I can pull the, put the plan back up and then Nathan could explain that, Chris? Does that make sense?
Yes, Rich, go ahead.
Should I go to Nathan?
It would be the next plan, Rich, so I think if you just scroll down.
Is that one there, right?
Yep, that, this, this shows it. So the site, and again, if you, if you look at the stormwater management report, there's actually kind of three catchment areas within this. If you could zoom out a little, Rich? So that existing wetland, as deemed by their local conservation commission, because again, DEP deemed it outside of their jurisdiction, is actually a detention pond that was constructed as part of the condo development. So there's a certain amount of catchment area that flows to that pond. And if we were to direct all this additional runoff to that pond, it would flood and not work how it was originally designed. So water, you can kind of see, there's a channel kind of right through the middle of the proposed solar array. We're, we're maintaining that grade as best as possible. And we've actually created a drainage swale on the eastern side of the site to try to help direct less runoff off-site and store it for basically detain it as long as we could. So our proposed stormwaters, we're actually reducing the amount of water coming off of what I'll call the butter side of the property by almost a half in terms of flow and a reduction in volume. Now granted, we are infiltrating it as, I believe John was his name, sorry, noted. And we, we performed test pits in working with Beta Group. We actually used a very conservative infiltration rate compared to what was actually calculated in the field. That's why if you, if you look at the size of the pond, it's, although it's shallow, it's, it's rather large. I don't know.
No, that's, no, that's, that's understood, because just looking at your plan, 100-year storm events, 256.42, the spillway is 256.
7.5, I think, off the top of my head.
It's on a different sheet. The elevation is not really clear to me, but, I mean, there's additional, yeah, so it's 256.8. So that's 0.38, so there's 0.38 feet beyond the 100-year storm event.
That's correct.
So you're, you're detaining a substantial amount of water on site.
That is correct.
I believe most flood insurance only go up to the 100-year storm event, too.
John, I know that doesn't satisfy some of your other questions, but does that answer your question with regard to the water infiltration? Or the effects of the, of the, of the water flow on your property?
No, I, I'm sorry, I understand what they're saying. I've been around when the town, the town water tower was draining. I called the town, it wasn't supposed to be, and I saw, I walked up there and there was a big gushing water coming out of there and it was running down the hill. And I'm thinking, if that was diverted by a fallen tree or who knows what, that would have come into the back of my house and been a disaster. It didn't, it flowed down to my neighbor Chris's driveway, he wasn't living there at the time, but that's happened a couple of times before he moved. So my point is that the water isn't going to soak in if, you know, it's pouring. And if it does get to that drainage pond, all the better, but I do think that however many tests you do, it's going to reach a saturation point with our ledge conditions here. And what happens then, I mean, you can't possibly, I, I mean, you, you can say you've tested it, but there's a saturation point where it rains tomorrow, the water's got to go somewhere. So I'm just voicing my concern and I understand that you can't force anyone to pay flood insurance, but that would be some sort of assurance that they believe in their own tests, to me.
Okay. Thank you, do we have other questions from the public, Ron, do you have any questions?
I have none, none, thank you.
Anybody else from the audience, the audience have a question? Doesn't sound like it, either Rich or Amy, nothing? No hands raised?
I guess the only other thing I would say
You're all mute.
Barbara, I'm sorry, okay, if I, the only other kind of based off what John was saying about the people, you know, there's probably not a whole lot of Union Street butters that truly care about this, you know, Chris Baker does, we do, because we're right down the hill. And then there are two other neighbors on the other side of us who I know one couple has been gone since the crisis has occurred and they've come back every two weeks to I shouldn't even say that, I shouldn't say that on this, or should I? They, they're not around. And so I'm, I'm just afraid, and, and it was someone who was not not up on the project previous to the, the last conservation commission meeting. And, you know, we had a conversation at that, after that meeting and he, you know, he was concerned about the project. So I guess my only point is, I don't know that all the relevant butters are, you know, available and know about this meeting and can make this meeting and, so I don't know that this is a that this should be the last meeting.
Dan or Nathan, are you, what is your, what is your timeframe on this project? I mean, if we were, if we were to ask for a continuance for maybe a sidewalk and to, to research in a little more detail some of the neighborhood concerns, because as you know, obviously on a project like this, for the ZBA, we're concerned with dimensional requirements and obviously the effects on the neighborhood. What is your timeframe and how would, how would a continuance affect you? Obviously, none of us know what's happening over the next month or two, but would this, how would this affect you if we did continue? So we could maybe do a sidewalk and also maybe get some input from some of the other neighbors?
It's not, not a huge concern, the condo association is definitely ready for this to be over, as they've been telling us for quite some time. But Barbara and Chris have been the only consistent ones to be at six months worth of meetings. And there's been ample opportunity for other people to speak their mind on this. I do understand Barbara's concerns. You know, we've really tried for a project this small and this setback from residential houses. We've added a substantial amount of landscaping, more so than we have on much larger projects with much larger residential butters. This project's been peer reviewed by Beta Group, Nathan's gone to quite a bit of the trouble to make this go above and beyond in terms of stormwater. And, you know, we do understand there's concerns about property values, but we do have university peer review studies that say the opposite. And so it just hasn't been a concern after these projects have been built in the past in terms of property values. We do want neighbors to be happy, we want them to be comfortable with the project and we really do this is not going to be seen or heard or affect anyone's life at all. And if there's a reasonable request of what, what would you guys do in the next month to get you to complete this project a little more, is my question for you guys.
I think, I think I heard some of what you said, Dan, and I, I think, what I think we'd want to do is do a sidewalk so we could see the effects of the neighbor's property, maybe take a look at how it all sits on that, on the ledge. And, and maybe, and I think talk to the butters as well as, I just would like to maybe talk to the condo association and make sure there is no concerns that someone's missed something because they weren't here. We have a pretty good rapport, the board does with the condo association, I'm sure Rich does as well. That would be my concern is, again, just to make sure that we, we haven't left anybody out. I think John's concern about the use of Zoom, though we're doing it and everybody, most of the boards are, I understand that as well, a lot of people obviously don't have the technology and obviously tonight we're having some, some difficulty too. But that would be my concern, would be just to allow the board in the next month to do a walkthrough and maybe have some conversations to try to, actually try to bring the, the butters back in and make sure that we can get them to a level of comfort. I mean, I know I'm not going to solve all John's problems, but I think, John, we, we rely on beta for technical expertise. And, you know, are they, are they, can they sit there and guarantee 100% of the time that they're right? No, none of us can though, but we do, we do rely on them and they've done a great job for us as far as the town as providing that expertise. So I think it's hard to say that, yeah, even though they did all the tests, that they're wrong. I think you have to rely on their technical ability. And, but that was what I would, I would suggest if we do delay the, or we do continue the hearing is that's what we try to do in the next month. And I know Devin had his hand up, so I'll let him speak for a moment.
So I, I just wanted to ask Amy or Rich, do you know if the appeal period is extended during this time?
So, yeah, I'm trying to think how.
I had heard personally 45 days, I'd not confirmed that for myself, I don't know if that's true or not.
Devin, what do you, when you say the appeal period, what are you referring to?
So typically,
When we close the, when we close the hearing?
If, if a decision was made one way or the other, I believe the typical appeal period is 20 days, correct? Where during this time, I, I've heard from other towns that it's been extended. I've been told 45 days, I'd not confirmed that for myself, I'd only heard that last night.
It has been extended, yeah.
I didn't think it was, you know, I thought you could, you could continue things if you wanted to.
I, I'm not sure exactly what it was. That is just what I heard.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if anyone else had, was privy to knowledge that I wasn't.
So you wouldn't, I wouldn't want to close, I wouldn't want to close the hearing and then allow it to become subject to an appeal if we're not comfortable with what we've heard tonight.
So I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't get concerns addressed. That was just more or less a question. Um, and then just one other thing that I would like to add is just, just my opinion on the sighting. Just looking at Google Earth, looking at the plans, it's about if I scale it off the plans, 200 plus feet of vegetation from where the Carter's house is, um, to where that evergreen screening starts. I have watched some of the planning board meetings. So I am a little bit up to date with a little bit of the discussions that's been going on with regards to screening. But that just feels like a very long distance and given that it's also across, um, other people's property. Just in my personal opinion, I don't support, uh, continuing this.
When you say across other people's property, between the Carter's property and the solar array?
Correct.
Is there a property between yours and the solar array, Barbara?
Do you mean that, um, Chris Baker's property?
Yes.
My next door neighbor? Okay. So if you look at the, if you look at the map, you can see there's a V, like we're like this, Chris is like this. So yes, his property does.
I'm going to put it back up. All right. Hold on.
If, if I may add too, we, we did provide during the planning board phase, a series of cross-sections with sightlines, um, from those abutting properties. And, and we did cite this to mitigate that based on not just vegetation, which I will note is close to 200 feet in, in most areas, um, if not all, but also the elevation change where there's, there's kind of a ridge, um, along that eastern property line. And then it kind of goes back down. So, uh, in addition, uh, working with the planning board, we actually state where the fence lines would be. Um, and I know one, one member of the planning board walked the site and gave his opinion that it would be minimal impact in terms of sight from the abutting properties.
Do we, do we have those cross-sections available tonight?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on.
Devin, I don't understand your point. Explain your point to me.
With regards to what point?
To the fact that Chris Baker's property is between us and what's, what are you getting at there?
Just, just my point is you, you're looking across approximately 150 feet of Chris Baker's property. So.
So what?
There, there's nothing that could prevent the Bakers from cutting trees on their property. I just, I, I, looking at, like I said, looking at Google Earth and scaling off a plan, it's, it's a pretty substantial amount of woods.
Right. The visual impact was said to be not going to happen. So the whole idea of that is, is not really true because I stood on our property while Barbara took a piece of the neon poster board and walked to the posts. And we could see her, I mean, I could see her, I took pictures, uh, directly behind the house. I don't think there will be a visual. Uh, but certainly along our lawn, you know, I'm walking in, into, up my driveway into the house. You know, I, I can't imagine you won't see it, especially given that those trees are 50, 60 feet high. It's not like solid evergreens. It's big branched trees that don't start until they're 40 feet high. So you can see way up to the top of the hill, especially now. Granted, it'll be less during the next six months, but.
Okay. Do I have any, any other comments from the board as far as, is the board comfortable with the information we have? Or would, do we have other folks who would like to maybe take a look at the site? Or what's the, what's the opinion of the board? I'll do a straw poll. Devin, you said you'd like to close the hearing.
Correct.
Uh, Don? Don, are you there?
He's not at the screen.
How about Joe?
I'd be in favor of a sidewalk.
Josie? Josie's.
I had, yes, I had one question. I don't know if you can hear me. I had one question. Uh, I did, I did, uh, hear, um, resident John, I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, mentioned that this solar farm will be for the exclusive use of a condo development. Am I correct in hearing that?
Uh, that is what I said, and if that's not true, then I'm incorrect. But my understanding is they are going to be paid, uh, from NextGrid. And the, I don't even think the electricity is going to power the condos, but I'm not sure about that. Nathan would know.
I just wanted to know if it, it's just a question.
It's on, it's on meeting houses, it's on meeting houses land. So that's, that's all, for our purposes, that's all that matters. It's on meeting houses land. So if there's profits to be had, the meeting house condos will obviously receive those profits.
Right. My point was that, you know, given the, the lack of urgency that like somebody's not having power. I was thinking that this farm is not necessarily, you know, so urgent. I don't want to prolong it either, but I just feel like there may be other people who feel differently.
I, I just wanted to know if the community would somehow benefit in some way. That's all.
Okay. Some would.
Okay, so, um,
The benefits do.
I don't know if I, if I would be in favor of a sidewalk, if, if these neighbors are discussing, if there's another neighbor between them and the development, maybe a sidewalk would be in order. Is that, am I correct in understanding, Mr. Carter, that there's a neighbor between you and this development?
Um, no, but there are another, there are other abutters. I mean, I think there are people's land that, that we look across, definitely that, uh, I guess if that's what you mean, but there's houses aren't there.
But there were other, I mean, you were mentioning changes and how things have been changing since you moved to the town. If you, have you considered what would happen or how you would feel if one of your neighbors changed something on their property? Would you feel the same way? Or do you think this is more?
People do changes all the time. In fact, the house across the street was rebuilt and it looks so much better. We're very happy. Now, there's been, I don't know. It's not exactly a development area there.
So Josie, are you in favor of a sidewalk or?
Just a sidewalk, just to see where the water runoff could be. Okay. But, um, I mean, as far as the changes, I mean, there's, I mean, changes could happen, but maybe something like that. So we can know more.
Tim, any thoughts, Tim?
Yeah, Chris, I'm in favor of a sidewalk. Um, I've heard enough from the abutters that I don't have a clear Google map in front of me. And I don't have that benefit because the way we're working right now, but just so I could understand a little better. I want to be fair on this. So I, I think a sidewalk would be certainly beneficial, at least for me.
Okay. And Don, are you back yet? Did we lose Don?
I'm right here. I'm right here.
Hi, Don.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with a sidewalk. I guess my question is this piece of property in its current state is zoned what?
B1.
B1. Rich is.
All right, B1, yeah, B1, sorry. Yep.
So therefore a, a, a business, uh, but the potential for a, um, a business building is there for that site. Is that correct?
I mean theoretically, yeah.
And that business building that's there, based on our height restrictions, would be, I believe it's 32 feet?
40?
40 feet. And the B2?
Huh?
40 feet, you said.
Yeah, 40, 40 feet and 46 feet by a special permit, but.
Okay, so I guess in looking at, at, uh, I'm fine with a sidewalk. But, um, it also sounds like the developer, based on their discussions with the planning board, is willing to do whatever they can to accommodate the, uh, abutters that are most concerned about this project. And I asked the question is if it was going to cost a thousand dollars and they said if it cost a thousand or 2,000, it was not going to be an insurmountable, uh, uh, obstacle to, for them to proceed with this project. So I guess I'm sitting there looking at it and thinking about other, um, projects that have been done in this town where we have deferred the project only to find, based on our own zoning laws, that 20 years later, something goes in there that's worse than what the original abutters were concerned about 20 years prior. So I just want to make that comment at, um, it, it sounds to me like the, this site is being, is, is going to have, I'll call it minimal development relative to how obnoxious it might be looking if it was some other type of business development in the B2. And secondly, that the, um, developer appears to be doing whatever they can to mitigate any issues that they may have. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling more comfortable with it all the time. The only other question I had was they talked about this retention pond being three feet deep. Is, is it possible to make it three and a half feet deep? Or, um, you know, three and three quarters feet deep? So is to further satisfy the abutter as it relates to potential 100-year storm plus runoff?
It's not that. That's not it. The, my concern is it's not going to drain, no matter how deep it is. If you got a two foot deep or four foot deep, if it's two feet at the bottom and it's frozen in the winter, you know, it's a skating rink for the kids. I don't know if it will drain. You say it will. I'm, I'm, you know, what if it doesn't? As my thing, I really.
Okay, thank you. That, and John, my only answer to that is we, we, we have consultants that provide us the information we need. In this case, it was, uh, was a Beta Group, correct, Chris? And, and, and so we have consultants that provide us with information. I know.
I know. I understand. Sorry.
As, as a ZBA member, I wouldn't know anything about that. And I have to rely on people who are hopefully more expertise, have more expertise and, uh, have some credibility to make those decisions. So, okay.
Go ahead, Devin. You had your hand up.
All I was going to say is, I, Rich, these, these plans have been reviewed by Beta. These, uh, plans, I imagine, have been designed by a professional engineer. They're providing, at least based off their plan, they're providing additional storage beyond the 100-year storm event. So.
That's true. Now, not being a professional engineer, but just as, as part of the process for the planning board, there was quite of, uh, back and forth between Beta and I know Nathaniel Collins on, um, site conditions for infiltration. And they have gone back and forth and they did the test holes and then they revised, uh, the assumptions in the drainage report based on site soil conditions. And I think you expanded the basin from, I think earlier on in the process. And if I recall, I don't have it in front of me, I could, I could certainly forward to the ZBA. They, one of the things in the planning board was that when the construction is to occur, there are going to be additional observations to make sure that the, the, you know, the material that is in the drains report is in fact what the, the material is out on the site when they do the basin to make sure that, um, those match up to protect against stormwater runoff, potential issues to the abutters, because it was a big, that was definitely a huge issue that I know they brought, brought for the, the neighbors through the planning board. And we went back and forth on that. And just the one point, I don't know the cars know. So there was a point in time when the planning board, um, actually NextGrid wanted to just have a buffer and then plant it and, and make observations. One, the site was cleared to see once the trees are removed, you know, how, what you could see. And what ended up settling on is the plan that you looked at, there is that double row of Leland's Cypress. And then the purpose of the sidewalk is when the site gets cleared, to see if it then opens up the woodland so that when they look, you know, what the visual appearance is and that where supplemental plants, you know, Leland's prices, Leland's Cypress, excuse me, might need to be planted as additional screen. So that's why, um, that condition remained in the planning board. I can certainly, uh, I don't, I mean, I could email to you. Obviously you can't, it's too, not much time to look at it tonight. But those were the, the conditions from the planning board process.
So Rich, just.
I'm going to cut you off there for a minute, Devin. Amy, when's our next meeting? Is it May 6th? Is that correct? Amy, Amy's muted. Amy's muted.
So.
Rich, Amy's muted.
Not anymore. So, um, we have a meeting next week. I'm not sure who's on that agenda. I can look, of course. Um, and then we have May 6th and then May 20th.
Who's on, who's on for May 6th now?
Um, I'll have to look if you can give me just a moment. Or two, I'm actually going to have to log into.
And while Amy's.
While you're.
Well, Amy's logging in. I think, well, I'm sorry, what we could do is we can take the cross-sections, the peer review that Beta did, the site plan approved, and we can give them to the board, the ZBA, to take a look at. So they can, you know, see what occurred through that peer review process too, as you, to get more information for you.
Well, that's what I'd like to do and try to get it on the May 6th so that we don't hold up. I think, I think this can be resolved, but I think as, as a ZBA, our job, one of our major responsibilities is to the neighborhood. And I think, um, I think we've got to be comfortable with that. And it sounds like there's a number of board members would like to take a slight walk. And, um, if we can get it on in May, and if that's okay with Dan and that doesn't delay them too much into the summer. If it, we do approve it, I'd like to, I'd like to go that route. So I guess my, Amy, have you had a chance to check our schedule?
Uh, yep, I'm looking at it now. We have, um, 112 Myrtle Street is for variance at seven o'clock. Seven o'clock, we have the new hearing for 7 Phillips Drive, 19 Shire. Um, and also at seven o'clock, we have Abbeyville.
All right.
Chris, can I ask something?
Go ahead.
One thing I want some clarification on, has this stormwater design been, been designed by a professional engineer?
Yes, I am a registered professional engineer in all of the New England states, including Maryland.
Okay, so you, you designed this stormwater system?
I designed the stormwater system, uh, working extensively with Beta Group. As Richard noted, um, we met in person, um, we met or had conference, several conference calls. Uh, I believe there were several reiterations. And in, in my professional opinion, this is, um, overdesigned as the infiltration rate that we used versus what we found actually in the field is extremely conservative at 2.41 inches per hour. And in the field, we were finding infiltration rates in the range of 15 minutes, uh, per inch. So, uh, again, I'm, I'm very confident. I stamped the stormwater management report, both for the planning board and for the conservation commission and Beta Group through their engineers reviewed and approved. In addition, just in, in terms of the vegetative. In addition, just in, in terms of the vegetative screening, the, the town's bylaws in the Business Corps, the Business One actually require this green belt for structures that are within one-hundred feet of the property line. We actually don't have any structures within the hundred foot of the property line. But we've still abided by the Green Belt Bylaw, which says we could actually go, the minimum depth from any residential property is thirty feet. We're in excess of fifty in all locations to the abutting residential property line. And as noted, we, we've added additional vegetation based on our work with the abutters through, I can't even keep track of how many different public hearings that were advertised, that were notified. We, we had, obviously, there's a butters list and notifications that were done for the planning board, all those hearings. There were two separate notifications that went out for Conservation Commission. All of the residents of the Meeting House condominium are part of that abutters list. It was a very expensive notification. They were all notified of the public hearing and prior to this unfortunate situation we're in, they all had opportunities to attend public hearings that were presented at. So I, I just, I, I wanted to state that based on some of the comments from, from previous board members in, in Abutters.
Hey, it's Barbara.
One more. Let's, let up Barbara one more time.
Just one more point on, on the, the other abutters. My only point was that I know that there are some people who aren't around. And one of the, one, one of the families for some reason didn't attend any of the meetings, but he attended the last Conservation Commission meeting. And then another neighbor did, outside of the Chris Baker, did attend the meetings and was, was on. So we're only, we're only really talking four or five people that really care about this. And or four or five households that really care about it. And I know the two of those have voiced opinions and I don't know where they are. So, and I don't know whether or not they, I know, I know one of them is not around. So that's the only reason why I bring that up.
Okay. Again, I think, I think it sounds like a sidewalk. And again, we're not questioning, I don't think, I don't think most of the board members are questioning the retention pond or the engineering, Nathan, that went into this. I think it's really just to try to come to grips with the abutters' concerns about the property. I'm sure they voiced them at the planning board. But again, this is the, I guess, the final stance for them. So as long as a one-month delay does not impact you folks too much, I guess I would ask for a motion to continue the public hearing for the next health project, next year grid project until May sixth at seven fifteen. And in between that time, we can, we can do some of our homework with some information from Rich. And we can set, schedule a sidewalk with Amy. And I would, and I just advise the abutters that if, if you are going to, I think, I think we can allow one butter to come. But if there are other residents, and I guess there's only four of you that are concerned, they've, they've got to, they've got to be present. I think the point is very well made that if the abutters have been notified, it is very expensive to notify abutters. And if they're not appearing, it makes it very difficult for this board to, to base it on hearsay that they're concerned if they're not here. And I know you and your husband are, and I know some aren't around. But it's, though, we need the abutters here if they want to be heard. Hearsay just, hearsay doesn't work. So I think I'll, I'll give some latitude here and allow, again, a motion to continue the public hearing to May sixth at seven fifteen to continue it and to do a sidewalk from now to that timeframe.
I, I so moved that, Chris. So moved. Can we get a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I think Devin's on one, Devin has a no for this, but the rest of us are aye.
Who seconded?
I think Tim seconded, right, Tim?
I, I did, yeah. Amy, I seconded, Tim.
And Devin's a no, okay.
Okay, all right. So Nathan and Dan, we will, we will get back to you, let you know when the sidewalk's going to be. And Barbara and your husband and any of the abutters, please let them know that we will be doing that. And if they have concerns, they should certainly, again, give them to Rich if you haven't already at the planning office. So we can, we can see those concerns again, other than what you brought to us tonight, okay?
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Now we, the board is going to, if you remember last time, we had closed the public hearing for seventy-seven Boardman Street and we did not do our deliberations. So at this time, why don't we, why don't we address deliberations for seventy-seven Boardman Street was the conversion of a single family to a two-family home. Joe, do you have some of the findings of facts from that hearing?
We have to, we have to go through them again. And I think Don's going to take notes on this, because I think Don, you'll write this one up? Unmute, Don.
Don, did, did Don have notes to say, or you say he's taking some notes?
No, at this point, none. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't go over the finding of facts last time, Chris. We, we should go over it right now and we'll both take notes, but Don might take on the, the write-up for this one.
Okay. All right. So does, does everybody have the application for seventy-seven Boardman Street still?
Well, in a moment, but I got some facts written down.
You have some facts down, Devin?
Yes.
Why don't you start?
So map fifteen, block fifty-four, lot seventy-three. The applicant stated there would be no changes to the property at all. It's attached to family dwelling. Each unit has a kitchen, a bathroom and a living room. And there is eight hundred, at least eight hundred square feet in each dwelling unit.
And my understanding was this was also, this had received back when we, when they did special permits for in-law apartments, this had received a special permit for an in-law apartment years earlier. Is that correct, Amy?
I don't believe so. I think that was asked about a neighboring house that had a temporary in-law, not this one.
Yeah, I don't recall that being, I don't recall that being a finding of fact, Chris.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that was.
That might have been, was that a, okay.
I think it was seventy-one Boardman Street?
Was it another property that had a, okay. I thought it was this property, okay.
And I think it was also a finding of fact that neither of the units within the two-family dwellings had either separate electric, separate heat or separate water. Yeah, and that, that wasn't required, wasn't required, if I'm correct, right? No, I'm just saying, I said finding of fact, neither of it has separate electric, separate heat or separate water. That's correct. Yes, I recall that too.
Okay.
And I.
The other findings of facts?
I did not ask the applicant if there was a separate kitchen, because they said it was a two-family dwelling for a number of years. I did not ask the applicant if there was a separate kitchen currently installed.
She did say there was two kitchens, if I'm not mistaken. She did say there was two kitchens on the property.
Yeah, you could probably go back to the, the hearing notes, the hearing, if we, if it's, like, can we replay the hearing for this?
It might be in the minutes.
Okay, because I do recall that too, by the way, the two kitchens.
Let me look at the four, one minute, see if I wrote that.
That did say two, she did say two kitchens. I have the note there.
Okay.
Yep.
And as a, under our. Excuse me?
Two bathrooms and a kitchen in each unit.
Yeah, okay. Am I correct that under classifying a, a unit as a two-family dwelling that the second dwelling cannot have a stove, it cannot have a full kitchen, it can only have like a microwave, a sink, et cetera, is that correct, under our building code for a two-family unit?
I don't know, is, no, it, it can have a fully functioning kitchen under that provision of the bylaw.
I think it has to have a stove.
Yeah, you actually, no, Tim is right. You have, you have to have a kitchen, you have to have a bathroom, you have to have a bedroom. Let me get the.
I, I just want, I don't want to confuse a situation where there's two separate units from a, I'll call it from a bank standpoint, when in fact neither of the units have separate electric, water or heat.
Yeah, so the, the criteria within the bylaw, you have to have a complete separate lavatory, a complete separate sanitary facilities. It doesn't say anything about, my apologies. You know, it doesn't say anything, actually, my retraction on the kitchen, it's, it's a a complete separate lavatory and sanitary facilities.
Okay. I, I remember when we had this discussion in town meeting twenty-five, thirty years ago, that there was a lot of discussion relative to when you approve a two-family unit, are you in fact approving what is ultimately a, a, a two-separate unit dwelling? You know, like a conduzation. And I recall there being some discussion about there cannot be two full kitchens in a two-family unit. If that's not in the bylaws, then, you know. But I recall that discussion.
So there, there used to be a temporary family apartment that was in the bylaw? And that, and that was removed? Which maybe that was the reference, that provision, but this is, this case, it's the conversion of a single family to a two-family.
Right. I think, I think that might be what you're referring to, Don.
Okay.
And that was removed from our bylaws.
And am I also correct, because this requires a special permit, that we can limit it to the current applicant? Is that correct?
So you, you do have the purview within the special permit to put conditions on it that you see fit. And if I recall from the testimony, she was fine with it being conditioned.
Yes, yes. We discussed that. That was going to be a condition of this.
Yeah.
What's the condition that it's going for this applicant or that the second unit had to be occupied by some person in particular?
So this was for her mother, right?
For her mother.
Yes. Right. I know we discussed the fact, making it a condition that, I guess, for this one situation, I was, I don't, I guess I'm not clear if we would have limited it to just anyone she could have in there. Once she leaves the premises, we would then, she wouldn't be able, it wouldn't be a two, two-family anymore. I guess we need to discuss that here is what is the exact condition? I, I, I guess my only concern in all of this, and I'm very comfortable with this, the, the applicant and, and what they're doing, and I totally support it a hundred percent. My concern is time goes on and things change, does this suddenly become a two-separate apartment home? In other words, a home for two separate families that are suddenly, we find that because of the fact that the electric was not divided and the plumbing was not divided, the water, that there's problems down the road. That's, that's, that's my sole concern. As far as what the applicant's trying to do for their mother, I am totally supportive of that. I guess I don't understand the transition from a two-family dwelling to a two-unit apartment. I'll call it that.
Well, it hurt, if you remember, in her particular case, she actually needed to have a the special permit to make it a two-family in order to get an occupancy as a two-family. In order to get the financial assistance from, for, for her mother.
That's correct. That was what she had, that was her testimony, that she needed to have a certain status on this particular dwelling for that financial assistance to go to her mother.
However, she was fine with limiting the, the permit to her mother. And so I would think if you wanted to condition it, that it's, as long as she's living there and then it remains as a two-family for that purpose. And then when she either moves out or is a.
Right, meaning unless her mother's living there, it's, it's no longer a two-family if her mother's no longer living there. Is that correct?
It's a condition that way.
Then I, I have any issues. My issue is solely, if you go into and you go looking at someplace close to Boston and you say, I want to buy a two-family home, okay? In order to be sold and financed by a bank as a two-family home, that home would have to have separate utilities so that it could be, be classified as a two-family home. And if we're classifying this as a two-family dwelling, we would have to have restrictions so that it's a two-family dwelling for her in its current use that she wishes to have. And then if, if something was to happen to either one or the other, that it doesn't suddenly become a two-family dwelling in Norfolk, that becomes a illegal two-family or two-unit apartment or two-unit home. Am I making sense? Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Don. Okay.
I'm not sure you have to have separate, separate metered utilities per se to make it a two-family. I can see why you'd like that, but I think there are a lot of the older ones that may have common meters and it could be a two or three family.
Our, our building code, our building code, Tim, does require, if, if it's, if it's two units, okay, that it does have separate electric service, okay, and separate water service. I can't speak to heat, okay, but it does have to, we have separate electric and separate water service in order to pass the fire code inspection. Right. And this wouldn't be like a grandfathered situation where maybe it was a two-family with shared utilities from the, before the bylaws. This is very different now. This is being created now at this time.
Right.
Right.
Right. On this one, I'm just looking at the, the bylaw, E two F. And it's, I think we all agree that the, the applicant has certainly satisfied the requirements of that. Meaning it's clear, no changes and so forth. I guess my only comment is, well, I'm certainly in favor of the applicant and the applicant would probably accept a favorable vote even with the restriction that was limited to her mother. I just, I just don't, I'm not in favor of adding that restriction. Because it raises que, it raises a lot of questions. Who's going to mourn to the mom's living there, you know, those types of things. But I'm certainly in favor of the applicant, just as is. She's met the criteria of E two F. It's a special permit. It's not a variance where we, where the, the requirements are laid out specifically in E two F. Of what the criteria are, and I think she's met them all. So I'm just, I just wouldn't go down a path of restricting it to her mother or anybody else to that matter. And she's making no change.
We, I agree with you.
Restricted to a member of the family, Tim?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any restrictions on who, who could live there or who couldn't live there. I, you know, with, with so many fair housing and all that, I.
But therefore you're saying that she could make this a, literally, she could make this an apartment, okay?
Right, she could make it a two-family.
And.
Is there a requirement for it to be a two-family?
And therefore, if you look at our code, if we go back to Bob Bullock or we go to the fire department and say, what do we have to do to make this a two-family? They're going to come back and they're going to say we must have a separate electric service.
I believe that's true.
There's no, there's no change. There's no changes to the building being asked for. There's no building permit being out. There's no changes to the building being asked for, there's no building permit being asked for.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so if they decided to, she, I think the point here is, and Tim, Tim's right on, on it, is that she's asking for this to be from a single family to a two-family dwelling. Our bylaw gives us certain criteria that she had. If we start putting restrictions on, suddenly this house of her mother no longer lives there, is no longer a two-family dwelling? How does that happen? We've authorized her through a special permit to allow it to become a two-family dwelling. So what, how, what, what authorization do we say, at some point in time, we're going to take that away from you? And if she did want to turn into two separate condominium units or something, at that point in time, she would have to apply for a building permit and an electrical permit to make those changes. So I think in, in the nature of our bylaw, it's very clear, is all we're approving is single-family, two-family dwelling, as long as she meets the criteria that, that's our authority. When we start, when we try crossing the line as to when that ceases, again, I think it, it's right, her mother leaves, somebody else in her family moves in, are we going to go down there and monitor and see if they're relative of hers? I don't think we, I don't think that's in our purview. I think we're going way beyond with the bylaw.
A- Amy, didn't we have a case in the last couple of years where, uh, a, a, a place was sold and the bank, uh, required it to be classified as a two-family? So that the, um, acquirer could either sell, um, or get a, a mortgage on it? So it had to be formally qualified as a two-family? And we took a look at, to ensure that there were double egresses, and that it was double electric, so that it could be classified as a two-family, and it came upon the board about three years ago. And it was on Main Street, right?
Yeah, I don't remember all the details, but that was Debbie Robins' house on Main Street, seventy-something, Main Street.
Yeah, I know, it was Main Street.
And that was, and that was approved as a two-family in its condition. There was no additional requirement, so we can, we could impose on her by the fire department or anybody else.
Yeah, well, I think there was a modification they had to make, though, to make it, wasn't there something about the escape from the second floor they had to take care of? Mm-hmm. There were several modifications, I think before.
But again.
We can make a decision on this, we need to.
This one.
Pull that decision, and we need to read through it, and make sure that we're not going to do something that's inconsistent with the decision that we made two years ago on that property on Main Street. Unless we approach it from the standpoint of, this is going to be conditioned on the current applicant, and how they use, utilize the property. I don't see how we can do it without truly understanding the ramifications of what we're putting forth for this property in the future. Right, should someone want to buy this house, it, it couldn't be marketed as a two-family house under that type of restriction, am I correct? With that type of condition, she could never market it as a two-family house, am I right?
I would think so.
Right, and it's, and, and for it to be properly marketed as a two-family house, it'd have to have what's required for a proper building permit? Which sounds like you would need to, so I think there is the condition, or at least the intent is there, that it really, this special permit lies just with this applicant, if I'm correct. Trying to help her, if her mother needs it to be classified as a two-family, so that she can get the financial assistance to help live there, and we're trying to accommodate that, I, I, I'm all for that.
Yeah, I, I am too.
Where it's not in perpetuity, that's all. Is it, Tim, am I, am I making sense?
I, I think, oh, well, you, you're making sense, but I, I think it's, in my view, it's getting a little convoluted, I, I would just stick to the bylaw, and, and I wouldn't get into, if it, i- i- it's a two-family regardless of who lives there, it's, it's, she's not making any changes. The, the, she admits, met all the criteria. If she goes out and gets a mortgage on it, and the lender forecloses on it, is it a two-family or not? You, you've got to get into value and check in birth certificates on who lives there, and check it every month who lives there. I would personally, I, I think just sticking to the bylaw, she's met the criteria, it's in the bylaw, under E2F. It seems like most of us are in favor of this, uh. She's not making any changes. If she has a building code issue, that's not related to this provision, that's a building code issue, this is a special permit issue. That would be a, that would be a separate matter. I, I, you know, I'm not going to, we're not going to go do inspections from a code issue, that's, that's not what she's asking for. She's making no changes, she's applied for no permits.
I, I a hundred percent agree with what Tim just said.
Um, I don't know, Chris, if Mr. White, if I could say something here. Um.
Go ahead.
But, and it, it, special permits are at your discretion, I do know that. But part of giving this special permit is looking at the neighborhood surroundings. And in past cases where I've sat before the board getting variances, or had tenants go and apply for a special permit to open up a hair salon in a manufacturing one zoning, they've always considered the characteristic of the neighborhood, the other neighbors, the zoning over there, and that neighborhood is solidly single-family, this isn't Main Street. This is Boardman Street. Uh, another question, I mean, you're basically saying either we, but Tim's saying either we give it to her, or we don't, we shouldn't place any restrictions. You know, but at the same time, this is a special permit, and it can be based on certain factors. This isn't by a right. So, um, I, I mean, it's hard to monitor, you could say you could stay with the owner, you could deny it, it doesn't make sense, and, and also we're getting involved in financial justice, or, I mean, I've never had a special permit, you know, been in a meeting before where it's for finances. I mean, that's something personal to the applicant, and, you know, the person can maybe still get, you know, voucher and live in the house without creating a two-family. Two-family in a single-family zoning, single-family neighborhood. I mean, it's not Main Street, I don't know what could come of this, we could get more cases like this.
Well, there aren't, there aren't any multi, there aren't any multi-family zones in Norfolk, and there's a provision here that allows for this. There's, there's no, there's no change to the building, it's already there. There's no change to the character.
I haven't heard any discussions about the fire escape, about the fire exit. That's something we're going to have to discuss. And, you know, basically, it's an in-law, it's an in-law unit, it's not a two-family, it's an in-law unit, there are several units in, uh, split levels and other homes that have a separate living area. And that doesn't make it a two-family, that make it an in-law department. Making it, going a step further, making it a two-family is changing that house.
Yeah, this, this only applies to this house if it existed at the time of the adoption of the bylaw, am I correct? Right, so doesn't, this does not apply to every ta, house in Norfolk, by the way, okay?
That's all right.
This house was built in somewhere. Fifty-three?
Fifty-three.
What did you say, Rich?
Yeah, nineteen fifty-three.
I mean, just going back to what Don and I were discussing, I, I like the idea of keeping this with the owner. I mean, if she sells the house, and someone else wants to convert it to a two-family, because it was in existence before the, at the time of the bylaw, let them apply for a special permit then. Does that make sense? I, I just don't see setting it up to be marketed as a two-family house.
So if she pa, if she passes away, then the mom's got to move out.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on, on, if the, if the title of the home is with the applicant, that's, depends on what the applicant's will says, okay?
Well, no, my point is that if, if, if it's limited to the applicant and she's, and she deceased, then, then the app, then, then the, the permit ceases.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, of course.
I, I, I just think we should base our decision off the zoning bylaws, and not try and convolute this thing with conditions that don't have to do with the bylaw. I, I think the bylaw is pretty clear, if you read it.
Yep. Yep, no, I agree. Tim, I'm going to put you on the spot for a minute, because I know you owned a two-family on Rockwood Road. You know, when, when you, um, and I think yours was a, and, and refresh my memory. Did you have any is, did you have any issues with the bank as far as, yours was actually considered a legal three or four family, I think, when we finally went all was said and done, right?
Right, it was, it was a four family, there was, there wasn't a bank involved, so I didn't have those issues, but I, I think I can speak to what a bank would look at, uh, and, and part of the question that, sometimes why banks want to know that it's a legal two-family is because they're trying to qualify the owner for the mortgage, and, and based on the fact that they can collect rent out of the other unit. Therefore, it's more of a financial issue, it's not a building code issue per se, it's more, can they collect that rent, and can we count that in the underwriting to see that they qualify for the mortgage? That's my experience on that.
Right.
So if it's not two-family, then you can't, you can't then assume the rent will come in.
Correct, okay.
The bank considers, uh, the bank considers seventy-five percent of that rental income, depending if it's an F A S, S H A loan, or another type of loan, up to seventy-five percent.
But that's, again, that's not what we're, that's not what we're here to, we're not here to evaluate how people are going to be living in this unit. Our concern, again, is the E2F. So, I guess, uh.
I, I guess my, my only other comment would be, I think we should pull, and we won't have time to do it over this Zoom meeting, but we should pull the decision that we made on the Main Street property, and look at that decision to make sure that wherever we're deciding on this property is consistent with that decision.
Amy, do you have that decision up on the screen, or do you have that decision?
I can, uh, so it was Main Street, right, you said?
Seven, right. Did Amy leave us, or?
Probably about eighteen months ago.
She didn't leave us, I have the access to the file, so I'll just.
Again, that one was slightly different, and I think it, it talks to what Josie was talking about, that one was up and down. This one is side by side. I think that's what everybody's got to remember, is this property, each, each unit has its own first floor, there was not an up and down on this one. So I don't think the issue of the fire escape comes in issue.
Rich, go down, yeah, that's, that's it, I guess, too.
Okay, do you have the decision?
Yes, I forgot I was on mute, I actually already had it open, sorry, Rich.
You see it on the screen?
Mm-hmm, I'm reading it now.
Amy, where is it? I don't have it on my screen, okay.
Do you have it now? Rich, is you, you have it?
Yep, I'm reading it. May sixteenth of eighteen.
Yeah, you probably want to go down to conditions, or.
Well, I'm looking at findings of facts first, so.
Right, right, right.
You, you're looking at the meeting, the meeting minute notes here? Yes.
Is this part of the detail section?
Yes. You just had to confirm that it met the, the zoning.
Yep. That one does have two services.
That's what I thought.
Common water.
Yeah, and was being used as a two-family already.
Correct.
If you'll notice, number eleven, there was a lot of discussion as to why the applicant, um, was, 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 uh, wanted to do this, because they wanted to sell the property, and they wanted to market it as a two-family dwelling, okay? And then we said as a condition, that's what I'm looking for, number twelve. It was suggested that the condition might be that the property needs to meet all building codes in regards to a two-family dwelling. But that would be outside of the purview of the Z B A, who's only confirming that a single-family home, which has been converted to a two-family, existed prior, in this case, that we were not granting the, um, uh, conversion to a two-family, but we, in this case, that it already had existed. Right. So we awarded them a special permit, so they could at least say it's a two-family unit? Yes. But it must meet all building codes in regards to a two-family dwelling. And the building code in this town does require a separate electric.
But just, just for the record, it's, it's not, it's the state building code, not the town's, but.
Okay, all right, I'll go with that.
Just for clarity, but.
The town never goes less than the state.
And.
No, I know.
The issue would be, he was selling the property. It wouldn't be, the issue would not be if her mother's moving in there with her.
Her mother could move in there tomorrow.
Right. But the, but she doesn't need two electrical services, I don't think, until she goes to sell the property, Don.
I, I would agree, until it gets, until someone tries to sell the property as a two-family, all right?
Right.
That. But, but the thing is, the reason is, we qualified it under zoning as a two-family dwelling. And then we.
That's for a, that, that's for a use purpose, not, not for a building code purpose.
But, but we can't, okay, I agree, I agree, Tim.
I'm not sure you, you, um, we'd have to check with the code, I think you can have it all in one utility, because you, you're, you rent it, it would just include all your.
Right, I don't know why you can't, I don't know if there's a, this, this, you can do that, there's, there's, there's many buildings, all the buildings that have common utilities.
Right, just how you rent it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go through our, uh. Why don't we go through their, uh, our finding, or, uh, trying to find it here? Is there anything else in the, uh, in our criteria, which I don't think there is? The unit must be in harmony with the general purpose and ten of the bylaw. Um, I need to use this for my elderly mother. Uh, the use is in appropriate location, not detrimental, detrimental to the neighborhood, does not just significantly alter the character of the zoning district, it does not, it's, it, it looks like a single-family home as it sits right now, and it can't change. Adequate and appropriate facilities were provided for the preparation of the property, yes, they will. The proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts and neighborhood properties due to effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sewage, refuge, visual or other nuisances. The changes will not be offensive to any of the other neighbors. Uh, the proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area, no. A proper site plan hasn't been filed for approval with the planning board, and the proper number of copies submitted with the application for a special permit to the Board of Appeals. Um, I don't think this requires, um, by the planning board through site plan, Rich, right? So it's just for the zoning board?
Yep, it's a zoning board.
The use, and the use is consistent with the nineteen ninety-two master plan, as most recently updated, yes. All right. So we have our finding of facts, do we have any other discussion on this?
Uh, just quick, I apologize, my computer shut off while there, we were mid-discussion on that condition. Was there any consensus on that?
I got to get a power cord.
I ran into the sa, same issue.
I don't think there was a condition we placed on it, because we can't, we can't condition the building department. So I don't think there was a condition.
I, I, I agree, I just, uh, obviously, I disconnected for a second, I just wanted to ensure that.
Yeah, the, the debate has gone in favor of some of the points you and Tim brought up, Devin.
Yep, okay.
Don, are you trying to hook something up, or?
I, I, I'm, I'm good, I'm just looking for now, I'm looking for extension cord for the power cord.
I got, I got the ten percent warning, and then my computer shut off, so.
Oh, oh, really, I, I, I got an eight. Extension cord, I'll be back in two seconds.
All right.
Tim. I don't see, Tim, is Tim still with us?
I'm here somewhere.
Okay, okay.
I, I can hear you, I just can't see you.
Okay, all right.
Waiting for Don.
Do we ever hear back, we ever hear back from Mike tonight? All right, I got it, all set.
Now, oh.
No, I sent him one more text.
Oh, wow. Here we go.
Tell us when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right. All right, so I'll ask for a, um, Joe, do you, Joe, you don't, do you have the notice of hearing in front of you?
No, not in front of me, I'm sorry, sir.
Um, all right, I guess I'll, 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 I'll make the motion to make it easy. Uh, the motion would be for Letitia Ariaga, I apologize for a special. Uh, the motion would be for Letitia Ariaga. I apologize for a special permit pursuant of M G L Chapter forty, Section nine as amended. Section E two F of the Norfolk zoning bylaws will allow the conversion of a single-family dwelling in existence at the time of the adoption of this bylaw to accommodate no more than two families. The property is located at seventy-seven Boardman Street. Don, can I have a motion to approve the special permit as I just read?
Yeah, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote. So.
Well, the discussion?
Any, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, yes. So, so have we now eliminated as part of this motion any, uh, special conditions regarding, uh, family?
I believe we have, Chris. Uh, Don.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So a roll call vote. Joe Sabatino?
Yeah, yes to grant. Yes to grant.
Don Hanson.
No to grant.
Devin?
Yes.
Yes to grant.
How? Josie Cordera?
No, no to grant.
Tim, are you out there? Tim Martin?
Yes, uh, yes to grant.
Okay. And as the chairman, Christopher Weider, yes to grant. Uh, the motion passes, uh, the special permit will be approved. Thank you. All right. We have, uh, we have some sets of minutes, right, Amy? Amy, the only set of minutes I could not find was the eighteenth of March. Did not seem to be in your list.
It was, I totally forgot about it. So I have to do that. That was the, um, the two-minute parking lot meeting where we just continued. And I totally.
Has, has everyone had a chance to review the minute, the meeting minutes yet or no?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Everybody has?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we, uh, now why don't we start with the, uh, can I get a motion to approve the February fifth, two thousand twenty minutes?
I so move. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, uh, February nineteenth?
Quick question?
You, go ahead, Rich.
So you have four favorable, two opposed, but you, I thought you only have five when you vote on. You had six people voting.
Two no's.
Go ahead, Amy.
Four in favor.
We had.
Four yes and two no.
Do you normally?
No, we only had one no.
No, we had two no.
One no.
Don and Josie.
Who was the other?
We had two no's. Doesn't matter because it only needs a simple majority for a, for a special permit, correct?
No.
Special permit needs four. So who was, the no I had was Josie. Who was the other no?
Don. Um, yeah, Don.
Don.
Don was no?
Yep.
Yeah.
Chris, Tim, Joe, and Devin were yes. So what's the question?
Right now.
No, the answer, the answer is it's a five-member board. So, and since Chris, Devin, Joe, and Tim. Tim is the alternative member. Voted yes. That's four out of the five members with Don being the fifth member. Josie is an associate member. She wouldn't vote unless we needed her.
Right.
All right.
Right.
Thank.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, I got you.
Okay, Rich?
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome. Don't do it again. All right. February, uh, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes I submitted?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of February nineteenth?
Second?
Two thousand twenty.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
March fourth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March fourth, two thousand twenty as submitted?
I make a motion that we submit, that we accept the minutes of March fourth, twenty twenty?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And we, um, we don't have March twelfth minute, meeting minutes. We do have March twelfth, March twelfth.
I wrote.
We have March twelfth. It's the eight. Don't have, yeah.
It, just, just one check. The, the minutes of March, were they March eighteenth or March twentieth, the ones we just accepted?
No.
March fourth.
Accepted March four.
March fourth. I'm sorry. My mistake. March fourth, yep.
Okay, March twelfth. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the March twelfth meeting?
I think it's March eleventh?
No, it's March twelfth. The first version I sent out said March eleventh at the top.
Okay.
But, um, but I since changed that. It's the twelfth.
All right. I make a motion. We accept the minutes of March, uh, twelfth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Do I have a second? Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Getting there. All right. April first. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April first as submitted?
Yeah, I, I could use another second or two just to.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, I got this feeling, Chris. Okay, take a minute to finish reading it.
Yep, take your time.
Thank you.
Let me just throw one thing out there. Um, so when I originally sent these out, I had not changed the attendance at the top. I still have Betsy's name from the previous, so that's been changed to me and all the plan names have been filled in.
For some, hey, Amy?
Yep.
For some reason I can't find these minutes. Under Town of Norfolk, I go to building, then I go to zoning, then I go to minutes.
Oh, no, they wouldn't be. They're only approved minutes are there. On the Town of Norfolk webpage, those are only approved minutes.
No, they're on the, they're in the documents for tonight's agenda.
So if you go to mytowngovernment.org.
Mytowngovernment, okay.
Mytowngovernment.org, go to tonight's meeting and they're there.
Okay.
It was a late night, ten forty-six.
Oh.
Yeah, that was a long meeting.
Yeah, that was one ninety-four and one forty-four.
Amy has the, um, has, uh, eighty-four Cleveland Street given you the increased bond yet or no? Increased bond requirements yet? Has he submitted that yet?
No.
Okay. Have we, have we contacted him, Rich, to make sure we get that?
We, um, we will. Actually, we're talking about that this morning with Amy. So I'll reach out to him.
Okay. Can you lose, Joe?
No, no, I'm here. I was just looking at the minutes. Yeah. I, I'm not, I see everything. It's all right on here. It's just. Anyone, anyone see anything wrong with the minutes?
I'm on page five. I'm almost there.
You know what? No.
Ready when you are done.
Ready. I'm good.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes for April first, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That takes care of all our, do we have any more?
Before we recess, Amy, Amy, before we recess, would you just quickly review the agenda for the next three meetings, please?
Sure. So we have, um, next week, the twenty-second. Definitely, I think we have one ninety-four and one forty-four.
I think we have one forty-four. I know that.
They're, um, hold on.
Yeah. I have down one ninety-four and Lakeland Hills, both.
Yeah, I think so. So I think they are both on the twenty-second. I'm coming up with my agendas right here.
Yeah. Just a note on the agenda tonight, Amy. You didn't mention the, uh, the meeting for next week.
Oh, okay, right. It was added in. Yeah, I didn't put it.
Right.
Um, yep, so one ninety-four and one forty-four next week, the twenty-second. Um, and then we have on the, the sixth, as I said earlier tonight, we have a, um, a variance for one twelve Myrtle Street, a special permit for seven Phillips Way and, um, Abbeyville. There's also an application, oh, it's gonna say on my desk, I have it here, that it's gonna be advertised. I think May twentieth.
Which is our next meeting. We do not have a meeting on the twelfth, right?
Not May, not May twelfth, no.
No, we have the sixth.
Got that.
Thirteenth. Yeah.
Not, not the thirteenth. We have no meeting on the thirteenth.
Correct.
Okay. Then on the twentieth, we have.
All right. Oh, yeah. No, no. I'm sorry. It's just Myrtle Street, the variance that you guys have seen. That one I still need to advertise, but that's gonna be on May, May sixth. So that's it. I thought there was one more, but there's not. So on the sixth, we have one twelve Myrtle Street, seven Phillips Way and Abbeyville. And then I don't believe we have anything scheduled after that.
And then you put the solar on there, too.
Right.
Yeah. When did that? Oh, yeah, that.
May sixth to seventh.
Yeah, on the sixth, yeah.
When will we schedule the walk, Chris?
I was, I was just gonna ask Amy. Amy, can you, um, send them out to the board and see what everybody's availability is? Obviously, social distancing, we have to take into account, but see what everybody's availability is to, um, meet out at that site.
Yeah, I'll do that. I have a note to do that tomorrow. Um, did you want to invite a butters to that?
I think you have to, yes. That's, I think that's what we're really addressing here is the butter, butter concerns.
Okay. Um.
Can we agree that what's the best time of day for most people right now? Is like end of the day, maybe before sundown?
I don't care.
First thing in the morning is, which will be better most likely.
I'll be in Norfolk, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Most of us are home. So I'm just saying, is there a better time of the day for most everybody?
Um, for me, it's more later in the day, late afternoon.
Yeah, I was thinking like, is, is a five o'clock a bad time?
No.
Yeah, at least for those who work from home, at least we know that pretty much we can walk away from our computers maybe at five o'clock.
Five o'clock work for everybody.
Speak for yourself, Joe.
Well, no, I mean, don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong. I got emails coming in this whole time, you know, but the bottom line is, you know, I just think that, you know, at least you can say at five o'clock, you can step away if you have to. And come back to and stay up till midnight. Do what you gotta do.
No, I'm just giving you a hard time.
I'll send an email tomorrow with everybody's consensus.
Okay.
All right. Great, great. With that, do I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals hearing for April fifteenth at nine seventeen?
So, all right, then I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a good evening, thank you, Rich and Amy, for zooming us all in.
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.